Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, April 7, Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thanks for being here this evening. We'll go ahead and get started by reading the roll, and just for the record, our clerk is going to be sitting up front tonight, Tom, so Tom, we'll get going.
Council members, Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Recky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
All right. We always have an invocation to kick off our meeting, which is always appreciated, and doing that remotely for us tonight is Pastor Kirk Thorson with Living Word Free Church. So Pastor Kirk, I'm going to ask the audience to stand, and then the floor is yours to give our invocation, so please rise.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have this opportunity to pray for you. Back in September 10th, I gave the opening prayer, and that was the council meeting right before the storms and tornadoes, and now I've been asked to pray during time of a pandemic. And so I'm thinking that Denise might think twice before she puts me on the list again to give prayer for you guys. But it is a pleasure to pray for you. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and those who serve in our city council for your service to our city and community. These are unprecedented times, and so we know that you have to give extra time and work, and you have more commitments now to our community. And so thank you for that. And we, as a church, seek to pray for our leaders on Sundays, from our president and vice president down to our leaders here in our state and community, for our governor and mayor and city council. The verse that comes to my mind tonight that I'd like to share is from Psalm 94:19, and that verse reads, "When the cares of my heart are many, your consolation fills my soul." Join with me in praying. Father, we thank you for the beauty of today that you have blessed us with. Even in these difficult times, we recognize your goodness to us in so many ways, and so we do thank you for health, and for our family, and friends, and safety, and for good leaders and rulers that you have put over us. We ask that you'd give them wisdom and discernment in the choices and decisions they make for our city. We do know that there are worries and concerns and burdens for each of us, and that that's a doubly heavy burden for our leaders. And so we'd ask that you'd grant them wisdom and discernment, health and safety. As our leaders work long hours and have many items on their plate, and their own jobs, and families, and public service, protect them and grant them good health. We ask for your mercy, your kindness on our city and nation and the world around us. God, we are thankful that you are a good and gracious Lord. You are the one from whom our hope and trust and confidence comes. And so we'd ask that you'd use these public officials for your good plans and purpose. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you can be seated. I'll ask Counselor Sale to join me up front for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to read a little bit about my good friend Steve Hildebrand and what he's done. For nearly eight years, Steve Hildebrand owned and operated Josiah's Coffee House Cafe and Bakery. Josiah's is a popular downtown spot serving a wide-ranging clientele. During his time at Josiah's, he advocated for people living in poverty, fought for a minimum wage for workers, and ran a successful campaign to eliminate predatory payday lenders in South Dakota. After college at SDSU, Steve spent 28 years as a campaign operative and a political consultant for Democratic candidates and progressive causes. In 2008, excuse me, 2007, 2008, he served as deputy campaign manager for Barack Obama's historical campaign win and was the original architect of Obama for President campaign. In 2019, Steve founded the Promising Futures Fund, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) focused on helping kids in 12 elementary and two middle schools in the Sioux Falls School District with the highest rates of poverty. And in just four months, Promising Futures Fund had raised nearly $1.5 million for Sioux Falls schools. In partnering with the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation, Steve stated, "We need this community to open their eyes wide to extreme poverty affecting these great kids. No one asked to be born poor. It wasn't a choice. That's why we have no choice but to help ensure these kids have a chance to catch up, to compete, and to excel in life. If we succeed, it means child succeeds. For our community, this means a citizen's moving out of poverty, out of trouble, and added to our workforce." Steve is a longtime Sioux Falls resident, living in the central part of Sioux Falls with his spouse Mike Pierce and their two crazy dogs. Steve Hildebrand exemplifies what it means to be a superhero by his advocacy and his philanthropy through those who are forgotten in the shadows of our society. Today, during this pandemic and in this crisis, we need more Steve Hildebrands, more superheroes to step forward. Your community is calling. Thank you, Steve.
I'm going to say a couple of things. People are dying to see a picture of elected officials breaking social distancing rules, so we're going to get skewered if we're too close in a picture. So we'll stand apart. We'll get a good picture. But I also want to thank Steve. That's a great, great piece. I know Steve probably is a little uncomfortable because he doesn't like the recognition like this, and I think that's what I appreciate about you. He's Norwegian, right. He does things for the right reasons. He's got a tremendous heart for our city. So thanks for all you're doing, Steve, for the kids in our city. It is noticed. It's appreciated. We do. Thank you, sir. All right. Thanks, Counselor Sale. We'll move on to our next item, item five, which is our consent agenda. Look for any changes or motions.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
Move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion, counsel? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr? Staley? Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 52, which is our regular agenda approval. Look for a motion on that.
Move Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, move to approve Erickson, seconded by Kylie on that. Any discussion on the regular agenda, counsel? Okay, we'll take a vote there, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero. We're at the general public input portion of our meeting tonight. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For our regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public forward for general public input. And Tom, please note our time is 7:09. Good evening. Good evening. Bruce Danielson. There's an expression, democracy dies in darkness. Real leaders take people into the darkness and find the light. Democracy dies in darkness. Our elected leader saying, "I really didn't sign up for this," is missing the point of leadership 101. There are no classes to teach imaginative leadership. It does not come from the Gallup polling service. We have had many leaders who really didn't understand what they got themselves into even prior to the drought, virus, or tornadoes. Democracy dies in darkness. Government positions are not to be treated as pedestals of success, a position of stature, or a line on their resume. We voters elected every one of you in this dais to lead us through the darkness by giving us disaster plans when the times are good. We had boom times up until two months ago. Why didn't the RS5 and their Plus One up in front of us have the disaster plans ready? Democracy dies in darkness. The reason we question and get derided by the RS5 members of this body is because we've been asking for preparedness, and all we get are jabs, insults, broken teeth, jail time, and more. Democracy dies in darkness. Last week, when I was finally able to log into the meetings held in this very room, I saw what easily could have been prosecuted as criminal. This is not Soviet Russia or Red China. This body is a public government forum where our rights guarantee our leaders and the public the ability to ask questions, no matter how embarrassing it might be to those in power. To tell the members of this body they cannot ask questions before they vote as criminal. Counselor Starr did the right thing in attempting to adjourn the meeting. Democracy dies in darkness. The reasons we ask embarrassing questions is because some of us have been lied to and jailed as a result of our questions. Just think of the midco-pool windows, HVAC failures in a building we didn't need, a death caused by a failed parking ramp project, secret settlements for a lousy siding job, and more. As in the old movie, "Don't pee in my boot and tell me it's raining." We know the difference. Democracy dies in darkness. Opening an official meeting by calling it goat roping is insulting to the body and especially the voters who put you here. Also hiding the city's pressers in business and health discussions on a private membership data harvesting service such as Facebook and not putting them on the taxpayer's City Link should be considered a crime. Democracy dies in darkness. Now, more than ever, the city needs leadership in this room because our city leadership has shown window shades are safer than open windows. This city government needs to empty their boots and get to work opening up the process to the public. It's time to come after hearing the open discussion that today's informational, that the people didn't sign up to speak via their phones and computers is something we need to do. Three-minute rule applies to everyone. Please sit down. Anyone else this evening?
Greetings. Now, this is a bit in general and not the agenda item in particular, so I guess this is the right time. But anyway, I'm David Sokitis. I'm here to talk to you about this nasty pandemic problem. There was a virus, jumped species. Now it's taken over the planet. It's going to infect about half the people on the planet. Not so good. Global panic. So it turns out that there are asymptomatic carriers, people who spread the disease but have no symptoms. That makes it hard to figure out what the heck's going on. Are the pandemic fatality rate is about 0.7%. There's my reference over there. It's worse than the flu, not as bad as the Spanish flu, but definitely a big problem. It's a big risk for the elderly. Check this out. If you're young and healthy, just about a 0% chance of dying from it. If you're elderly, five or so, 10% chance, not good at all. Okay, if you've got heart disease, chances of dying from this go way up. Try not to get heart disease. Live healthy. It's spread mostly from saliva droplets, from coughing or even from speaking. So you've got to protect yourself from those one way or another. We got to figure this out. What we're trying to do as a nation and as a world is to reduce transmission speed so we don't overlook the healthcare system. We want to make sure everybody gets the care they need. All right. If we can tackle COVID, you'd think we should be able to tackle obesity, which turns out to be a worse problem. We need to change the way we live, have less sugar and more exercise. Hard to know what really to trust in government because science has been bashed so thoroughly in the current administration. So maybe we should figure things out for ourselves. We should be testing people like crazy, but there's not enough tests. The government didn't do a very good job getting us ready when they should have had the information. Some religious rituals are part of the problem. We've got to do something about that. We've known about the germ theory of disease for 100 years. It's time to apply that to all aspects of society. Now, here's some really important questions that I haven't seen just anywhere. How effective are cloth face masks at stopping transmission of this disease? You know, that's really a trillion-dollar question. And how does that compel social distancing? I'd like to see that the city fund a study to answer that question because it is so critically important. And as always, we should find something to smile about. There's a cool picture on my cellphone. Kind of fun. And with that, good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening for public input? All right, see no one else? Up, ma'am? Come on up.
Hello, my name's Catherine Riffel. I'm an advocate for the almost displaced persons. I'm going to try and make this real short. I'm not feeling tonight. My mother passed away, and I had a mini stroke, so I'm caught on my words. On March 27, in Washington, D.C., the House of Representatives passed the CARE Act for unhoused neighbors so that they're protected and the risk of becoming homeless are almost null and void. The National Law Center on Homeless Poverty said that they're grateful to give the stimulus bills, including $4 billion in funding and protection for homeless Americans, and $150 billion in other funding that is eligible for use of services, housing and rental, and the organization working on the front lines. $4 billion in flexible emergency services grants are out there to help the people to get into housing, hotels, and motels. $150 billion is highly flexible and can be used for almost any disaster. Studies have shown that people experiencing homelessness are more vulnerable to illness in general, as in this COVID-19, hence tracking and self-containing ourselves and keeping a social distance. The crisis makes it clear that ending homelessness is imperative, not only for those most directly affected, but for all of us. Eric Torres, the director of the Law Center, said, "This bill gives communities the dollars to do so." So now there is no reason. It's not just individuals' duty to follow the stay-at-home orders. It's our government's duty to ensure people have a home to stay in for their health and for everyone else. And I did take a run downtown the other day, and they still do need more. So if we could do that, I'd appreciate it. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else this evening? Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening. First, I just want to thank you all for your diligence at this time and for the leadership you've shown our community at this time of crisis.
Can you say your name, sir?
My name is Will Anderson. I'm here tonight on behalf of the 70,000 people in Sioux Falls who rent and don't own their own home. I wrote to you yesterday morning asking you to consider using your power to enact a 90-day moratorium on evictions in Sioux Falls. I received a reply last night from the city attorney, Mr. Dan Hagar, explaining to me that the city believes there are two legal constraints within South Dakota codified law preventing you from acting on this matter. I just wanted to speak for a few minutes this evening to address his concerns and explain to you why I think you, in fact, do have the power to act at this unprecedented moment. It's our opinion and the opinion of our own council that the statutes Mr. Hagar referenced do not prevent you from acting. He cited South Dakota codified law 21-16, which governs the process of eviction, and 6-12, the statutes that govern home rule charters. 21-16 outlines the process of eviction and gives the circuit courts the jurisdiction to render in cases of forcible entry and detainer, but it does not mention or specifically limit the capacity of municipalities to issue ordinances pertinent to their own rental communities. We believe that you're within your authority to act under this provision of state law. 6-12 governs home rule charters. Nowhere in 612-6, the statutes that govern restrictions on home rule charters, does it explicitly prohibit or sinuate that you do not have the authority to issue a citywide moratorium on evictions? There are other statutes under 612 that require municipal ordinances to be as stringent as state laws, but say that you may set standards and requirements which are higher or more stringent than those. It's our opinion that requiring a greater amount of time before lesser could file for a forcible entry and detainer for non-payment would meet the conditions of this statute, and we believe that you're within your authority to act under this provision of state law. As my email articulated, the city charter outlaws just four limitations, measures that you're not authorized to enact. Those are levy a personal or corporate income tax, two, issue more liquor licenses, three, permit increased gaming, or four, incur an additional debt. You are the sole licenser of rental properties in this town. Therefore, you alone have the authority to determine what those licensees may or may not do with those licenses. I understand that there might not be any established legal precedent for what we're asking, but like I've said, we are living in unprecedented times. I have no doubt that you all care for your fellow citizens, but I am asking you tonight to turn that care into action, especially on this, one of the holiest weeks in the Christian calendar. As you celebrate Easter with your families safe in your own homes, I would hearken you to reflect on the words of Proverbs 31:8-9, "Open your mouth for the mute, for the rights of all who are destitute. Open your mouths, judge righteously. Defend the rights of the poor and the needy."
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight, and I would ask you to look into doing anything you can.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening for public input? All right, we'll move on then. Clerk, to our next item, please.
Item 54, new 2020 retail wine and cider license and 2019/20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for family dollar number 32375, 2511 South Minnesota Avenue. CUP not required. Item 55, new 2020 retail wine and cider license and 2019/20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license. Arceia Incorporated, 5021 North Anika Drive, Suite 101, CUP not required. Item 56, request to include video lottery terminals with the new 2019/20 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Arceia Incorporated, 5021 North Anika Drive, Suite 101, CUP not required. Item 57, transfer of 2020 package liquor license from Arceia Incorporated Food and Fuel, 4701 West 12th Street, to Arceia Incorporated Business Name to be Determined, 5021 North Anika Drive, CUP not required. Item 58, special one-day wine licenses for downtown Sioux Falls to be operated at the following locations, 605 Maid's Spring Market, 100 South Phillips Avenue, Nathan Railroad Center, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 200A, Atole Spa, 317 South Phillips Avenue, Beck Tole Jewelry, 325 South Phillips Avenue, Chelsea's Beauty, 220 South Phillips Avenue, Great Outdoor Store, 201 East 10th Street, Home Porch Gifts, 217 Phillips Avenue, JLG Architects, 232 South Main Avenue, Laura Bell's, 206 South Phillips Avenue, MK Threads, 421 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 112, Nyberg's Ace, 220 East 12th Street, Rayfield's Art and Framing, 210 South Phillips Avenue, Say Anything Jewelry, 225 South Phillips Avenue, Sharing the Dream in Guatemala, 421 North Phillips Avenue, Simply Perfect, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 108, Sticks and Steel, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 118, Swamp Thaddeus, 421 North Phillips Avenue, Young &amp; Richards, 222 South Phillips Avenue, Common Sense, 400 South 2nd Avenue, TH Gray, 330 South Phillips Avenue, Mint &amp; Basil, 207 South Phillips Avenue, and JH &amp; Sons, 216 South Phillips Avenue for an art and wine walk on May 1st, 2020.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Jamie.
Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions on items 54 through 57 and request a motion to withdraw item 58. That event has been canceled, so.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public wish to speak on these items? Counsel, do you have any questions for Jamie? Counsel Steely?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a statement. For any person coming to that podium, if you have a concern, I was just talking with our health director, but there is hand sanitizer there. We're practicing sanitary procedures here, so please feel free to treat your hands. And I guess the microphones are okay, but just a little reminder. Thank you.
Any questions for Jamie on these items?
I make a motion to withdraw item 58.
Second.
Okay, motion by Erickson, seconded by Selberg on that. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right. Amendment passes eight to zero, so looking for a motion to pass the items 54 through 57.
So moved, Erickson.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Erickson and seconded by Counselor Sale on that. And any other discussion, counsel? All right, we'll vote on those items, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move to item 59, please.
Item 59, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, extending the effective date of ordinance number 2820 adopted in the Sioux Falls Board of Health Second Amended and Restated Regulations pertaining to the novel coronavirus COVID-19.
Good evening, Jill.
Good evening, Jill Franken, Public Health Director. The item before you is the city's social distancing ordinance that was adopted on March 26 at a special city council meeting. At that time, we anticipated that we may possibly need to recommend an extension of this ordinance, which is before you for second reading here. This particular ordinance would go through April 22 if adopted. Just to give you a little update on where we're at with COVID-19 cases in our area, South Dakota has currently 320 cases of COVID-19. Minnehaha and Lincoln County, which are the two counties that we're paying very close attention to, obviously, are at 192 cases. We had an increase just today of 28 cases. We've actually been ranging around 25 to 35 cases per day in the last week for those two counties, just for some reference. In South Dakota, we now have six deaths, unfortunately, in our state. And so just to give you a little bit of where we're at today. You know, we continue to engage in discussions with our health systems in unified command, along with assistance with the South Dakota Department of Health to look forward, to predict our case trends, and to identify those data triggers which may necessitate additional social distancing regulation for our community. This data, as well as resulting mitigations, are really in county-level terms, not just city-level terms. We're really, the state is looking at this based on county data. We are looking at this based on county data and actually also taking it from an MSA approach as well. So while I have, we anticipate, you know, that we'll continue to look at it that way and that we will work closely with the State Department of Health on any, you know, future recommendations that we as an EOC would be bringing forward to you. So while I've mentioned to you, and I did just last week, that additional regulation could possibly need to be recommended, additional orders have been issued by the governor just as recently as yesterday for both statewide and specifically for Minnehaha and Lincoln County regulation. So you're probably well aware of this, but Governor Noem did revise her prior EO 2020-12, changing the word "should" to "shall," and includes actions that every resident of South Dakota, every employer, every enclosed retail business, healthcare organizations, and municipal governments should take. In addition, yesterday, the governor did issue specific stay-at-home ordinance orders for Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties based on our rates of COVID cases, and that's specific for persons over age 65. I want to emphasize that because I think I misstated that earlier today. So I read it and typed it in here specifically. That's over, persons over age 65, and all persons who have serious underlying medical conditions. These, I believe, and we as the EOC and Unified Command feel they are good steps to take right now that will further mitigate the spread of COVID-19, along with advancing this ordinance that before you an additional two weeks. And certainly, we will be closely monitoring the impacts of these new orders that the governor issued, as well as extending this ordinance an additional two weeks. So given that we're not recommending anything by way of any new regulation or new recommendations tonight, rather just an extension of this existing ordinance, our health system partners are not are not here this evening. However, they do plan to provide a update to the community on Thursday morning during the daily media briefing, so please stay, tune in for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jill. Thanks for all the work and hours you're putting in right now. This lady's burning it from both ends, so thank you. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight, please come forward.
See, I'm from Sioux Falls, so again, I'm going to say this. We're not in World War III. Six deaths in South Dakota is not bad at all. We had the flu that killed more people last year. Mertin Haken is a wonderful guy, but I'm going to have to say this here. Mertin Haken was on social media or the news and the August leader and was going to the doors with kids on a doorstep, there was three or four kids, to go along with his daughter to pass prizes out for drawings. He also was a good idea to have a fire truck parade. We had almost a hundred people in the Shopko parking lot in a long sycamore, like we would, like Pomade Gras in New Orleans. This is what it was, I couldn't believe it. People were calling me from the window neighborhood and said, "See, can you come down here and see it?" I was tied up on something else in Central District. So we need to stop being so much health freaks here because I love Governor Noem, she's not going to shut nothing down. We have Constitution, y'all want to do Constitution here, everything's about the Constitution here. If we want to do stuff about diseases and health and, and let's get down to nitty-gritty, we have massage parlors that is prostituting, human trafficking by labor, that's fixing to come up in a couple of weeks with evidence that I'm going to pull out. So if y'all want to get down to diseases, let's get down aggressively on these illegal massage parlors that is happening in the city of Sioux Falls, because there's two that isn't, it's just, I just can't believe, begin to tell you what's going on in there. And it's still an open investigation, but I will come out and reveal it in upcoming weeks here. So if we're going to practice this and we're going to extend this COVID-19, then we need to crack down with the Health Department on these illegal prostitution brothel houses here that we have on Louise Avenue and Forty-first Street here in Sioux Falls. I've been working continuously with law enforcement on this issue here, and it's being put back on the back burner. So we need to stop, we need to social distance, but we need to stop having the mayor and everybody and the kids waiting for the mayor outside of their houses because that's not practicing social distancing either here. So we're not in New York City, they're not dropping, people's not dropping dead like flies here. And the people that are dying here, it's not over just the coronavirus, there's underlying issues on that, okay?
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak tonight on this item? All right, we'll move into any discussion or questions, I'll start with, with Jill from the council. Do you have any questions for her? Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Franken, I guess my, my questions, at least at the beginning of this, and this being second reading, is from an enforcement standpoint. Do you see the, us as, whether it's members of your department or the police department, being able to enforce what the governor has done? Do you see us going out and enforcing that? How, how do you see us enforcing it? Let me phrase that a little better.
I watched the governor's press conference today, and she indicated that, that those executive orders are under her jurisdiction to enforce, and so certainly, if there's a need for us to provide some assistance, we would work with, whether it's the State Department of Health or Highway Patrol or, or whatever, but we will, we'll certainly be working in cooperation with them as needed.
Would you see us having our police department enforce those executive orders in some way?
We're already, I don't want to say it's necessarily our police department, but they certainly assist us if we get, say, a complaint of a retail establishment that has to abide by our, even our own ordinance. They work with our Health Department already, and we've done a fair amount of proactive enforcement of our existing ordinance to make sure that people know what that ordinance is and that they're complying with it, and we've found full compliance thus far, even with unannounced inspections, if you will.
Well, I think that's pretty normal for how we enforce most of our ordinances in this city. We try to warn and try to get people to follow along, whether it's zoning or any of the other things, and I appreciate that part of it, that I think if you just ask people, they'll do the right thing, and at least ninety percent when we talk about code enforcement or ninety-five percent after that first thing. So then to follow up, the, the enforcement process of this ordinance that we would pass tonight, how do you envision us, because we added teeth not that long ago to an ordinance saying that, you know, it's a class-two misdemeanor, do you see any? Chan, trying to find the right word, because opportunity isn't the right word that I want to use, but do you see any place where we plan to enforce that or will need to enforce that, that we're still continuing to get that compliance without having to, to enforce it?
Given Counselor Starr that this is just an extension for an additional two weeks, I would say that we'll manage this the same as we have up to this point since this was put into effect.
Do you see with the governor's executive order that she sent out yesterday, that we should extend this to a longer period of time than two weeks?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions on the phone for Jill? All right, Counselor Staley?
Jill, just a clarification for, for our public. I did listen to the governor's executive order yesterday, and she, my ears perked up when she said that she was going to be limiting movement for people sixty-five and older. And then I heard you at the press conference yesterday saying that, or was that this morning? No, that, did you, did you do yesterday or did the mayor?
This morning.
Yeah, okay. So yesterday, you talked about that people needed to stay home if they were sixty-five. But then, at the same time, we heard, heard you talking about using golf courses, and I have had people contact me with concerns about the proximity of golf courses, that people are getting too close, and also the bike trails. So the, the concern I have, and I, and I just want to clarify this for the public, is that we do not want to be participating in any kind of age discrimination. And sixty-five, if we say to people that you're sixty-five, that you cannot go to the golf course, you cannot go on the bike trail. And I say, what if we had doctors and nurses that are sixty-five, they cannot go to work? So at this point, just to clarify with the public, that that is not part of an ordinance that we have, and that we will not be putting any enforcements on people or penalties on people if they do go out and maybe take a walk on the bike trail if they're sixty-five. Am I stating that correctly?
We have not changed our ordinance. It's, it's just extending it two weeks. It's separate and apart from the order that the governor issued.
Right, so we're not going to be enforcing the order that the governor issued, as far as, I mean, what, what are we telling people that are sixty-five in Sioux Falls? Can they go golfing?
I think the governor made it really clear what she's expecting of people who are over age sixty-five and with underlying, serious underlying medical conditions. She has made it clear that she wants them to be staying home at this point in time unless they have, there's a couple of factors work-related that are, I believe, I'm going to grab the ordinance, or the order so that I state it correctly. I do not want to misstate it. To flatten the curve and slow down hospitalizations, adults over the age of sixty-five and people of any age who have serious underlying medical conditions, collectively referred to as vulnerable individuals, shall stay at home or a place of residence if possible, except for vulnerable individuals, to work in a critical infrastructure sector job or to conduct essential errands.
So I'm going to ask our city attorney, Stacy Coestra, Stacy, what are we telling to our citizens that are sixty-five if they want to go play a round of golf, driving in their carts by themselves?
Well, we would tell individuals, councilors, that they would be to, you know, abide by the law, and the governor acted within the scope of her authority statutorily, and there is a constitutional analysis related to that. And when it comes to looking at, in these circumstances in which we find ourselves, if there's a compelling government interest and, and acting within the most restrictive means possible, then that would survive constitutional muster. So when you tell people, in fact, it's, it's not really our guidance, other than to say that you abide by the law.
Well, so, we say to a sixty-five-year-old person, you can get on your bike and ride on the bike trail? I mean, I think, I think we need to be clarifying, are there going to be penalties? Are we going to be arresting people? Are we going to, how are we going to define, you know, who can go out and who can't?
Well, any, anytime you have a law that's in place, we reserve all rights and remedies available at law. We're still reviewing the enforcement components of this. But again, if the governor is acting within the bounds of her authority, which is laid out in statute, then it applies, and we couldn't tell anybody to not abide by what the law says.
So if they do, as of now, our, we don't have an ordinance that's going to impose a penalty?
There is no ordinance, in effect, related to this. It's a, it's a state law. It's an executive order which is issued pursuant to a state law.
So golf, and I know, someone sent me a screenshot of the, of what we have on the bike trails, talking about safe distancing. Are we now going to put something on there, if you're over sixty-five, you cannot use the bike trail?
I don't.
Are we going to give an order to golf courses that you will, you will have to tell people over sixty-five to go home? Are we going to start carting people as, and my point being, this is what my point is, is that I'm saying if we're applying this to someone sixty-five to stay at home and, and that age group, then I think we need to be applying it to people who are forty-five and people who are twenty-five, because this, this thing is going to be affecting everyone. And to, to put those people off, and many of them very active and very healthy, to say, you're going to have to stay at home and you cannot get on your bike and you cannot go play a round of golf, I think is discriminatory. I think we're opening ourselves up for, for some kind of a lawsuit if AARP gets involved. So I, I just think we need to be very careful about, you know, how we're going to proceed with this. And maybe, I got the feeling yesterday from that press conference that you did, Director Franken, that you are going to be trying to kind of envelop this into this ordinance that we're talking about tonight, this kind of, this kind of a legality measure moving forward. And you can, if I, if I misread that, please correct me.
Could you restate a question with that? I...
Yeah, when you said you had gotten this information from the governor, we had heard what she said and that you were going to be looking at how we're going to be putting that together within the city of, how the city of Sioux Falls was going to be taking that in and implementing it.
I think I could speak to that, and, and I can't go word for word as to what she referenced yesterday, but the conversations we had were related to digesting what the governor ordered. We received that yesterday. And so, again, distinct from the ordinance that's in front of the council tonight, I think that's important for the public to be aware, that that component is, is state law, and the governor has mandated that through an executive order. So there isn't anything from a city ordinance point of view, and so I think her comments, as we've discussed together, are related to, let's take a look at what that means, what the impact is, because of course, that executive order applies to Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. And so I think it was more of a processing statement than it was enveloping anything within our ordinance, which of course was noticed as far back as last week.
Okay, and, and so I'm still going to leave this open-ended, that I think we need to be making some statement as to what our sixty-five-year-old active citizens can do in our community. And if they can't do it, then we better be putting something in place, telling them that, because we can't just partially do what the governor said and, well, yeah, it's there, but we're, we're going to do it here, or, I mean, I think we need to make some, some definitive decisions about that. That's my request.
And I understand, and that would be more of a, a policy decision. I, I do want to clarify that it is over sixty-five, because you, you referenced sixty-five, and I know you understand that, I just want to make sure it's clear.
And I, I think the guidelines are sixty, aren't they? Isn't that nationally, they're, they're saying sixty, so she even gave us, I mean, I'm sixty-two.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, Counselor.
I, I believe what Counsel, I believe what Counselor Staley is addressing right now is not a part of this agenda item. I suggest that we move on with the item as it's written.
Um, okay. He is correct in that we're talking about the governor's executive order and not our ordinance, so if you have any wrap-up thoughts or questions for Jill?
No, thank you, I just appreciate, I think the public is going to be eager to hear what we do moving forward with that.
Thank you. Any questions for Jill, while we have more questions?
I'll move to approve, Erickson.
Move to approve?
Wait, 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 wait. I've got a question.
We can still.
Councilmember Recky has a question.
All right, Counselor Erickson has a, has a motion on the phone. Let me get...
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to get it, I, I was trying to get my, I'm, I'm remote access and I couldn't get my, I couldn't get you to hear me before the motion was made. I was making my request before the motion was made.
We can still take the question, I just want to get a second to that motion, and then we'll, we'll, the four of yours. All right, seconded by Counselor Kylie. Go ahead, Counselor Recky.
Um, it was a question for Jill Franken, for Director Franken.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the, the ordinance has been in place for two weeks, and I know you're working on modeling and, and you're watching the numbers very carefully. Can you just talk a little bit about the effectiveness of it? Is it performing as you think's necessary? And then I have a follow-up question to that.
If you're asking specifically about this ordinance that was put in place on the twenty-sixth of March, we have seen evidence that it is having an effect. We've seen things such as traffic counts decreasing, we've seen various anecdotal information, we've seen from doing proactive, you know, inspections of entities that are under this ordinance, in compliance. We, when we have had people call in just to want us to check on a certain entity, we've gone out and done that as well and found them to be in compliance, and so I do believe it's having an effect. Thank you.
Okay, just a, a follow-up question. The follow-up question was, I was really more specifically asking with regard to COVID-19, do you believe that our self-distancing measures are having an impact on the numbers like, like you're, we're hoping, I'm assuming when you put this ordinance together?
Well, the modeling that we are doing is really dynamic, and it is us taking, you know, our best effort at working with the health systems through Unified Command, along with other members of our EOC, to really take, where are we going with our cases in Minnehaha and Lincoln County, and, and where do we predict they will go? And so, right now is probably a time where we have to now take a little bit of time to look at the governor's orders, and coupled with this ordinance, you know, take now a look to see in the next few days where we see that going. I, I do think, and I wouldn't bring this forward if, for extension, if I didn't think it was a good idea for us to do so. I think it's very important that we do so, but then also, in addition to that, those orders that were issued by the governor yesterday also, I think, should have an effect, and that's what we'll be continuing to, to monitor. We are in conversations with our systems because they are the ones that are going to start seeing also the impact through hospitalizations, so that's another measure we'll be monitoring closely. I hope that answers your question.
That did, and then one follow-up, or just one additional question in the, you know, as we, and to go forward, are, what other measures are you looking at that we may potentially have to execute, you know, for the safety of our citizens as the disease progresses?
Additional measures will certainly be based on where we see acceleration in our cases, the timing of that, in terms of how quickly we'll start seeing acceleration, and so additional measures at this time, I really can't, I, I don't want to, you know, just throw a guess out there right now, because what the governor issued, you know, are going to have an impact. We are going to see more people than we even did up until yesterday, staying home, not soc, you know, being socially distant, not congregating together. I think that is going to have an effect. And I would rather give that some time and continue to work with our State Department of Health and our health partners, before providing any recommendations or even suggestions about what we may need to do next.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Staley.
I'm going to, I have an amendment. I'm going to make a motion to amend this by making the following changes. And this is going to be kind of a housekeeping dissertation here, first of all. So, first of all, adding new, number one on page three, and Jim's got this on the screen up here, followed by, quote, "Any enclosed retail business that promotes public gathering shall," end quote. And then strike, "Any enclosed retail businesses that promote public gathering shall," in the next paragraph, to be labeled as Item A. Next, add a new paragraph labeled as B, that states, quote, "Ensure CDC-recommended social distancing and sanitization guidelines are being utilized, and comply with federal and state health guidelines in order to prevent the spread of the virus-causing COVID-19," end quote. Next one, add a new paragraph labeled as Item C, that states, quote, "Shall require any employee who is ill to stay at home," end quote. Next item, label the following paragraph as Item D. Next one, add the following paragraph on page four after Roman numeral eight, quote, "Businesses that offer food and beverages solely for off-site consumption as defined above shall limit their patron and employee occupancy to no more than 20% of their posted occupancy, shall ensure CDC-recommended social distancing and sanitization guides are being utilized." Quote, "The businesses identified in this Section 3, 1, Section A, shall require any employee who is ill to stay home." In the next paragraph, add, quote, "And all other," and strike the word "the," renumber the following paragraphs as numbers two, three, and four. And after the city of Sioux Falls in paragraph four, add the following, quote, "Shall limit their patron and employee occupancy to more than, no more than 20% of their posted occupancy, ensure CDC-recommended social distancing and sanitization guides are being utilized." That's my motion.
Want to repeat that? No, I'm just kidding. I'm looking for a second on that.
Second, Starr.
All right. Second by Counselor Starr. Counselor Staley, do you want to speak to that?
I would like to. And this, actually, Mr. Mayor, this, I was inspired by what you talked about, when you were talking about the safer-at-home executive order that you put into place this week. And I, when this ordinance first came up, I did express my concern that we were talking specifically about patrons, no more than 10 patrons in a business. And I said at the time, what are we doing for the employees? And my impression at that time was that we are going to be trusting in the benevolent kindness and care of the employers. Since then, I've had many contacts, reach-outs by constituents, as I'm sure my colleagues have as well, and these are constituents who are working in places of business, families of people working there. They're concerned about the working environment. And as we're working now to protect our patrons, we're working to protect our public in our parks, our 65-year-old active generation people, we're doing all sorts of things. I think we need to put a little more energy into helping out our employees. The mayor's proclamation has, under G, "Residents should support local businesses that promote social distancing and demonstrate compliance with CDC guidelines." And we're, so we're talking again about patrons supporting our businesses. And Section 5, "Businesses not bound by the limitation of 10 or fewer patrons as originally set forth in ordinance number 28 through 20 should, whenever possible, limit their patron occupancy to no more than 20% of their posted occupancy, and institute a safe social distancing strategy for the customers outside their place of business wanting to enter." So once again, this is all geared towards the customer and the patron. And I'm thinking to myself, and I'm watching these employees gather together in some instances, and maybe being, having no choice but to be gathered together, I'm thinking, what can we do to put something in place to give them a little protection? So, the amendment that I just proposed, that had, that went to all the details of logistics, is aimed at protecting employees by spelling out social distancing in the workplace, proper sanitization in the workplace, putting another energy towards saying they can stay at home when they're sick, and patron and employee occupancy. Now, this is, Mr. Mayor, you talked about the patron occupancy to be no more than 20%, but I'm adding the employees to that. The employee, let's put that all together in the 20%. And so, that's it. Now, I apologize that this was, I sent this out at 3:30 today to my colleagues, because I was still tweaking it, and in fact, we were still tweaking it after, between our four o'clock meeting and our seven o'clock. So, I thank Jim David, as he helps, this employee here helps all of us logistically put things together, never meaning that Jim David is supporting what we're doing. I do need to make that clarification, Jim, because he helps all of us, as if he was supporting us. But he's neutral, and so I appreciate that. But anyway, we put this together, I wanted, and if it doesn't pass tonight, I think at least we've had this discussion to say, you know, we think this is important to try to take care of our employees. They deserve to have somebody standing up for them as well. So with that, I'm willing to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Counselor Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have several questions, Counselor Staley, for you, since you are the author of the amendment. Please know that as a council member, I take great responsibility to vet any amendment, especially one that I only received just a few hours ago. And so when drafting this amendment, my question to you is, through this process, did you consult with our city attorney? I know he is the mayor's city attorney, but he's also my city attorney and your city attorney, and every single one of us. It's a hat that I think would be challenging, just like we often talk about Jim David and Tom Greco and Dave Bixler. So my question is, has this been vetted through the city attorney?
No, it has not. And Counselor Erickson, if I may?
I will continue, thank you. My other question is.
Hold on, let me, please, she asked me a question.
I'm going to let Counselor Staley finish, and then Counselor Erickson.
That's fine, I have several questions.
And, well, I mean, just to, just to follow up on that, there are times, and I need to say this for the public, we have a right in this body to bring amendments forward. And sometimes we bring them forward at the last minute. I think of the beekeeping ordinance, Counselor Erickson, you brought amendments forward that none of us had seen the night of the beekeeping ordinance. Do you remember that?
I do, and we're talking about a pandemic, not bees.
I understand, but we're talking about, I get that. But we have a right to be able to bring forward legislation, and there's, and we have a right to be able to do it without being belittled or ridiculed, to do it with respect. So I did not, I did not get any feedback from Counselor, or from Stacy Coystra, and if this is something that you're not comfortable with, that we want to move forward and bring it back later as an ordinance, as I said earlier, I'm very, very happy to do that.
And because, Counselor, that I just got this, I do have several questions, that I'm trying to understand this in a respectful manner. And so I feel that it's important for all the public to hear my questions and have you answer those, because you've clearly vetted this, and I have not. And so that's my concern, is we're dealing with a pandemic that we can't just shoot from the hip, so to speak. And so my question would be, have you discussed this with Jill, Sanford, Avera? Have you been in consultation with those players all at the same time? Because it's so important for us to do that. My other question is, and I know you alluded to it a little bit, but including the employee counts into that, how would that impact those essential workers? Because grocery store and pharmacies are considered essential workers right now. So how would that impact those stores with including that into that amount?
Well, I, are you asking me?
Yes, thank you.
What I've observed in being in the retail stores is that, well, first of all, we've made a move, just in the last few days, to limit the amount of people that can go into a Walmart or a Hy-Vee. And so I have noticed employees, though, together. I mean, there's been, we've had no regulations about what amount of employees can be in a space together. So this is just, to me, it's just common sense. I don't think I need to have a medical examiner, or to say, well, you know, these employees shouldn't be shoved together. I mean, if patrons can't be together, why would an employee be together? If we're social distancing on customers, why wouldn't we be putting things in place to help the employees as well? And I've heard stories about, and I'll just be blunt, casino workers are, have reached out, they're being told to clean computer screens with Windex, you know, and then they've got people touching things. And so there's a concern about safety issues there. I had actually also put into this that we would create a employee hotline, where people could call in and say, we're having problems with our employer. But I took that out. So at this point, if anyone is not comfortable with any of these, if you want to offer a friendly amendment, go for it. If you're not, if you vote it down, that's okay too. But at least we're having a conversation. I do believe, at the end, we're going to move ahead, something will evolve that will stand behind.
Counselor Erickson, you want to continue?
Yes, I do, thank you. If I can ask a couple of questions to Stacy, our city attorney. It's my understanding that this would be a substantial change, is that correct?
Well, when you look at, there's a state law, and let me just give you that answer based on state law, that amendments can be made, Counselor Staley is correct, there have been amendments that have occurred before. Those are really tailoring ordinances, they're not substantive. And so, in this case, in the event that, and of course, a 20% restriction on businesses, that doesn't exist in the prior ordinance, would, in my opinion, be a substantive change. And the state law says, if you're going to proceed in that regard, then this really, in effect, turns into a first reading, if the council would amend that, which would require a subsequent, a second reading in no earlier than five days.
So we would, essentially, if this amendment passes, we would have to then vote on it again next week?
Correct.
Okay, so then my second question is, this expires. So that means that this ordinance that we have in front of us now expires, and that time lapse is gone, correct?
The ordinance that was passed two weeks ago would lapse tomorrow.
Exactly. So for me personally, now is not the time to put our foot on the brake. And that's what this amendment does, because it kicks the can for five days down the road. This essentially says, hey, everybody, guess what? Open your business, and for five days, the bars and the establishments are going to be packed, because they can, because this does not restrict them anymore. And so unfortunately, we have a five-day lapse that hasn't been thought through with this. And for that reason, I cannot support this. If something needs to be brought forward, Counselor, I admire the ability of you, when you brought forth the ping-pong table, when you brought forth the project fund trim, and talked to all the counselor about that. And it was brought forward in a very collaborative way with all of those players, the Parks Department. I think both of those really impacted the Parks Department. So all of it was done, in a way, with all of the council. This is not there. This opens up every single bar, restaurant, everything that has, all the work we've been done is gone for five days.
Okay.
I can't, I can't support that, and I would ask my colleagues to not support that. Counselor, if you want to bring something back that has some substantial changes, and have a first reading, unfortunately, based on the guidance that our city attorney is giving us, is saying it has to have a first and a second reading, we're in that kind of, I think it stinks. We're in a, we're in a very fluid situation, where the data changes day to day to day, and we can't make decisions as a city and a city council without first and second reading. I get it, it's due process. I'm not disputing due process. But what sucks about that is the fact that we can't quickly add in a situation that is now. As we see the numbers start to increase, now's not the time for us to say, everybody have a party for five days. It's just not responsible.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Counselor Staley.
Counselor Erickson, I think, I think there's a lot of drama happening here. All you had to do was vote no on this. I brought it forward, and I understand, I have a right to bring an amendment forward, and if the city, if the city attorney says that it's too much of a substantial change, I get that. I'm not, I'm not pushing this forward with a hammer. And I absolutely was not trying, you're putting, you're trying to put a spin on this, that somehow I'm trying to endanger the citizens. Absolutely not. Kurt Sale brought something forward several months ago, where he substantially changed something we were bringing forward. There was no drama about it. He brought it forward, we said that it's too substantial, so there was none of this other dialogue involved. So if you don't, if you can't support it, I get it. That's fine. I'm glad we're having the discussion. And once again, I had a right to bring this forward. This all evolved since yesterday, I did send it to you ahead of time. Last week, Counselor Starr brought one later, and you guys all hit him over the head so disrespectfully, because you said he didn't give you enough notice. So it's, once again, I acted with very transparent, good intentions, and I brought it to you as soon as I, to me, it should be tied in with this ordinance at some point. And we're not done. I mean, we're still moving forward, things are changing all the time. So I wasn't trying to endanger our society.
And I appreciate that.
Much in contrast to what you said.
And I appreciate you bringing something forward and thinking it through, I appreciate that. But my point is, the timing of it cannot be done in the way that it was done. And I just wish you would have reached out to the city attorney, so something substantively can be done, because we are, I mean, the stuff that I hear one day into the next day, it changes so fast. One day we hear the governor say this, and then the president says this, and then we, I mean, it's crazy. And so I just don't want to undo, I just don't want to undo the work that has been done by our health board. And so, continue to work through it, and I appreciate that. I just don't think it's the right time.
I would actually like to ask our city attorney to clarify some authorities, because there's some authority things here, the proclamation, for instance, getting referenced as being an authoritative document. Can you just speak to that, to make sure that those watching and everyone here is clear on that?
I can, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so, just because I want to make sure. I know there's a lot of interest in this right now, and a lot of concern, particularly with those 66 and above. And so I think it's helpful just to explain the three, the three sources, primary sources of authority under which the state is operating right now, relevant to Sioux Falls. And the first, of course, being state law. And that's really been highlighted in the last 36 hours or so, because of the executive orders that are in effect. And so, as we talked about earlier, those are, those are good law, and they apply. And to that end, I do want to take a moment just to clarify the Governor Noem's Executive Order 2020-13, which is the one that we're discussing. And there's a paragraph in there that hasn't been discussed, again, so that the public is aware of this. Paragraph five is entitled "Remote Work and Outdoors," and it states that nothing in this executive order prohibits working from home, exercising outside, or farming and ranching activities. Indeed, remote work and enjoying the outdoors consistent with CDC guidance are encouraged. That's important for the folks to which that executive order applies to understand that. The second authority to which I'm referencing is city ordinance. That's what's being discussed right now. But the third is the mayor's proclamation, because the mayor's proclamation came out the same day as the governor's executive order, and the mayor's proclamation, as anybody's reviewed it, and I think Counselor Staley referenced it, that there are recommendations at this point. So with the enforcement component of that, those are recommendations, there is similar language to Counselor Staley's amendment in that proclamation, but those do not have the weight of law at this time. So there, again, state law, city ordinance, and the mayor's proclamation. If people have questions about those, they should just review them in detail, because they do provide guidance and clarity, if you have taken the time to go through and read them.
Thanks for clarifying that. Let's move into further discussion, or anyone else have questions for Counselor Staley? I'll start with Counselor Sale, and then if anyone's on the phone, I'll go next there.
Yes, Counselor Staley, you referenced people being ill, that the employer shall make them, mandate that they stay home. So who would, would we be required to make that employer pay for their sick time? So who would, would we be required to make that employer pay for their sick time?
My question would be, if somebody does stay home because they're ill, everybody's employee handbook and their policies are different. Some people are paid for their sick time, other peoples are not. And I know people that are working today in establishments, they might have breast cancer. Well, that's certainly not a communicable disease. It's probably, they might be at a higher rate of susceptibility to the COVID-19. We understand that. And some people, they then are segmented to a different part of the building. So I think that your intentions are very good, but I think there are so many underlying things, like, when it comes to who is ill and defining illness and how they are treated by their employers, most people want to work today if they can. So that would be my reservation with this.
Well, and as far as who pays for it, you know, that's a good point, Counsel Sale. But I have heard reports of people who are feeling ill, who are still having to come into work. And I think at this point, when we're actually talking about closing businesses down as a last-case resort, and I'm going to reference back to what our Director Franken said a week ago, that we had three things that could happen. We could implement a curfew, we could have a shelter-in-place order, and we could close businesses. So I guess if we go to that route of closing businesses, who's going to pay for those employees as well? The governor did say yesterday that they have a program called, I think it's Payroll Protection Program. So that, I mean, there's all sorts of things going out there to help people pay for these things. But the bottom line I was trying to define here is that if somebody is sick, they shouldn't have to come in to work. Hopefully, and just, let me just say, by having this discussion, even if this doesn't pass, I think this is a very positive thing to bring awareness to, to the employees and to, you know, their, again, their rights in the midst of our scrutinizing the rights of the patrons.
Right. Any questions on the phone for Counsel Staley on this amendment?
Mr. Mayor.
I'll go with, I think I heard Counsel Kylie and Counsel Breckie next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Staley, now that you are aware that this is considered to be a substantial change, and that it would cause a lapse in our current ordinance, would you be willing to withdraw this item?
I guess I would ask Stacy Kuester if I'd have to withdraw the item.
I think procedurally, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so then we would, we would just encourage a no vote if you felt that, in lieu of a withdrawal, if that's what you felt was appropriate.
Oh, because I, I thought last time, didn't we say, how was that? I thought, when Kurt Sale brought that, remember when he brought that up? Did we even vote on it? I think maybe we didn't.
I believe we did vote on that. Once you have a motion and a second, then you should see it through to a vote.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure.
Other questions?
Not sure about the answer to that one, Counsel Kylie.
Well, Ms., with, Mr. Mayor, I would just, I just, if, if the counselor is allowed to withdraw the item, as we have done in past council meetings, of course, that would have been prior to our city attorney Stacy Kuester being part of the city government. I would just request that Counsel Staley withdraw the item, because forcing us to vote it down does unfortunately give the impression to the public that those of us that vote no aren't interested in protecting the public. And that is certainly not anyone's position on this council.
I understand the concern there, Counsel Kylie. I do believe procedurally, however, with the motion and a second, that we will, we will be taking a vote on this. Counsel Breckie.
If you're talking, you're on mute, ma'am. All right.
I just want to say that I'm very appreciative of Counsel Staley bringing this issue forward. I have received a lot of emails as well from employees who are complaining and are feeling unprotected and unsafe in their working environment. I think it's important that we do something that protects them. And the, if you look at the language that's being proposed, it's very, it has a very strong parallel to the governor's proclamation. In her proclamation, she speaks, you know, very clearly to protection of the employees as well as the patrons. And so if we're not going to pass it tonight, I do think that it would be wise to go ahead and parallel that and to have a, you know, if we, you know, if we, I, I'm shocked that this amendment is considered substantive. I'm shocked by that, because we're, we have an ordinance where we're, we're setting out criteria, and all this is just doing is adding another category of person to the criteria. But be that as it may, the city attorney has rules, and, you know, I have to respect his ruling. But I think we should bring it forward as a separate ordinance right behind this and follow up, and just like the governor, make sure that we include the safety of employees as well as the safety of patrons in our social distancing rules.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess there's a couple of things that really stood out to me with this amendment, and that is protecting employees. You know, we spend a lot of time, you know, talking about the economic impact of our community, and what do we all talk about when we run for election? It's workforce. And if our workforce dies or is home at sick for three weeks, like I was with influenza earlier this year and some of the similar type of things, and saw the, what that does both to my employer and to my family and the, there, but to not be able to take care of employees, whether it's open five days or not, but that's what happens when we drop these things at the last minute. And that's, you know, it's never good to make law at the last minute. Time pressure helps negotiations. It's probably the first rule of negotiating to get things accomplished. But to talk about paid sick leave and people not having paid sick leave, or, you know, at the same time, I've received several calls from employees who've said that they've been offered bonuses, a $500 bonus to stay at work for the next 30 days. Not whether they're well, not whether they're sick or they can pay their bills, but their employers offered them a $500 bonus to do that. That's the exact opposite of what we're trying to do. And it's weird that we're here tonight arguing about, well, the governor said this, or the mayor said that, and something that we can't enforce, or we can kind of enforce it, but our police department's not going to enforce it, but our health department can. And it, I think our citizens are getting sick of not seeing the leadership to take us forward. And I would never say that the law is something to be sick of or to belittle the Constitution. I take the same oath to withhold both the state constitution and our federal constitution. But at the same time, employees should be included in the number that we do when we talk about occupancy. I mean, how could you, why not open all the bars and call them employees? Or hire them on the spot? Or vendors? Or, there's lots of loopholes through this whole thing that we're doing tonight. This is pretty mild, and I'm willing to support it, and to say that employees are just as important. When we don't protect them as a city, then the first thing that I do for these people is to tell them to call OSHA. That's the next thing. And we don't want to include the feds in what we're doing, but if they're not going to get the protection from the city and the state, then that's where they have to go next. That's why we have a local OSHA office in Sioux Falls now, because there were people who didn't follow those guidelines. And I'm going to support this, because I'm not willing to, to say that employees aren't just as valuable as the employers who are trying to scratch out a living.
Counsel Sale.
Just add one more contact to what Counsel Starr said. South Dakota Division of Labor, if you're an employee and having these problems, South Dakota Division of Labor has enforcement powers on the way you're treated. So contact them.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on the phone before we call for a vote on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Nitzer.
I just, thank you. I just want to make sure that we circle back and we all remember that if we amend this, our ordinance is going to lapse. And not only employees will not be protected, but nobody in the city is going to be protected. It would be grossly irresponsible to pass the amendment based on those grounds alone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we've heard from most of the counselors. I'm going to call for a moat, excuse me, a vote on this amendment to amend item 59. Counsel members, Nitzer?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
I want to explain my vote. I'm voting no, but that's only because it's based on the, on the city attorney's opinion. And I do want to assist Counsel Members Staley in bringing it back as a separate ordinance. So no.
Erickson?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Okay. That item fails, six to two. So we're back to the original motion. Any other discussion amongst counsel or motions to make, amendments to make, I should say? Counsel Staley?
I just want to say thank you for the discussion.
Anytime. Anytime. Any discussion on the phone?
And Mr. Mayor?
That's Counsel Kylie, and then Counsel Erickson.
And I just want to declare, and I shouldn't have to, but I support all citizens, excluding employees. And it was unfortunate that it was implied that if we vote no, that we don't support employees. Every member of this council does. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Nitzer, go ahead.
I, I think it goes without saying that we are going to see Facebook posts and other commentary saying that certain people voted for employees and other people did not. I guarantee it. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this one? I'm going to call for a vote on the original motion then, please. Counsel members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Counsel. That passes eight to zero. Move on to item 60 here. Item 60, second reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental emergency appropriations for housing. Good evening, young man.
Good evening, Mayor. Counselors Jeff Ekoff, Planning and Development Services. This is the second reading for the appropriation of the One Sioux Falls Fund. Just a quick update, there are currently just a little over 2,500 applications, applicants for the fund. 778 have been funded to date. They meet every Tuesday and Thursday, and they go through about 300 to 350 applicants per meeting.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jeff on this one? Look for a motion on it. Move approval?
Second.
All right. Motion approved by Selberg and seconded by Counsel Sale. Any discussion, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Staley.
Mr. Anderson, would you come forward, please? So I appreciate you being here. You're representing 70,000 renters?
That's how many there are in the city. I can't say that I specifically speak for all of them, but I am, I am one of them.
So is your group aware of this rental assistance program that we're voting on here?
We are, correct. And, and I applaud the efforts that the city council has, have, have done to provide this avenue. My concern is what happens when it dries up? What happens to the people whose applications don't get approved? And what happens to people who ultimately end up getting evicted through no fault of their own?
And if I may, just to clarification on this, you wanted a 90-day moratorium on evictions?
That's, that's what we're asking, at least evictions for no payment or non-payment.
But how long, once that process, you know, you miss a month of payment, isn't it quite a lengthy time before you actually would be evicted anyway?
You know, a home foreclosure is a little different than being evicted from an apartment. Already this month, we've seen landlords proceed with three-day notices and motions to remove tenants for non-payment.
But I thought legally that there was a whole process that had to get turned into the sheriff.
It can be dragged out, but generally, the process can be as expedient as a landlord needs it to be. I mean, if, if you're hiding out at home and don't have any place to go, it's pretty easy that they're going to find you to serve you the paperwork.
So, okay. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. So Mr. Ekoff, please come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
So my question would be next, when we have this, and is it, have we, how are we doing with those pledges?
I'm sorry, Counsel Staley, I do not have that information. That would be the community foundation.
Okay. So, because I've been kind of telling the public it could be all over 3 million. I mean, for sure, we got 2 million.
With the pledges, it's 3.1, I believe.
If, if they, if that, but there was only 500,000 that had come through last week.
That was as of last week. And as you, you may remember that Andy Patterson had contacted, there were 12 outstanding pledges. He had contacted all of them and felt they would all be paying. It is a process to go through, but he did not foresee any of those not paying.
So listening to the concern that he has, I'm thinking, what are the possibilities for making, maybe, would it ever be possible to reduce that $800 to $900, 70% payment you're giving the landlord? And, and maybe work with landlords to say, will you, from this fund, would you, would you accept a $300 payment to save these people from, because it sounds like if we're giving them a month's worth, which is what you're doing, right?
Yes, they decided to go one month at a time.
One month? So what's going to happen to these people the next month? Is it a one-time?
Well, they're doing one month. They want to give everybody the first month. And then as funds are available, they would go into a second month and go as far as they can with it. The other thing, too, is the average has come down, because that average that we gave you last week included mortgages. And so now that they, those are kind of out of there, the actual average on the rents is more in that 700 and some dollars.
Okay. So I, well, I'm just trying to think as far as this pool of money, which, as far as I know, is the only pool of money we have in our community to help renters. If there was some way we could work with landlords to say, would you take this amount of money just to save someone from eviction? He's asking, he was asking us to do some kind of legislation that's out of our hands, the 90-day moratorium. But if there was some other way of working with them, just to give them something, you know, is that a possibility? Or is this is locked in stone?
If you look at the num, I mean, to go out and negotiate with every single, on behalf of every single person? Is that what you're asking?
Well, no, they'd have to apply. And I don't know how many of these 70,000 renters have, maybe, most of them don't have a problem, or some of them don't.
I guess I'm, they have applied. They, they know they're eligible for 70%. And that's been the rule throughout the fund. So you're asking, I'm sorry, I'm.
Well, I, to make the fund go farther, we, I wonder if there's ever any ability to make that 50%? Or is that, is that, that's set?
I think it could be made as low as possible, but we don't have the ability to request, we can request that a landlord gives their tenants grace or discounts, but we can't put any mandate on that. And I think is, I think is the question you're asking, is can we ask the landlords to give a discount?
Well, and here, here's the thing, if we got the 70% we're giving to that landlord, right? And we, last week, you said you weren't sure how that other 30% was going to get made up, if they would forgive it, or, but what's to say the landlord gets this, is he going into an agreement with you to say, I'll take the 70% and then let them stay for a month? Is that, I mean, what agree, what, what are we getting from the landlord for that?
We are, we're paying the landlord directly on behalf of that person.
Right, but he, but they, they still are, they still are needing that 30% to make them whole.
Our, our intent would be that the individual has that 30%, or the landlord is working with them. We wouldn't be giving them the money if they were evicting them.
Exactly. That's what I'm, so I'm saying, if, if the need proves to be over, even bigger than we think, it would really be needed, there was some ability to maybe change that, just to spread it out more so the landlord would be, well, we're happy we're getting 50% and you can stay.
And you could certainly propose that. You could, you could do that if you wanted to. The risk is what happens with people at 50%. Does that, do people then, do landlords then turn it down and evict them anyway? Because it's not enough? Because it's not enough? Is it enough for some?
Well, that's when you sign an agreement that says you won't do that. I would hope at this point, there's still, 70%...
We wouldn't give them the funds if they wouldn't, Counselor Staley, but that doesn't mean that they would just not accept the funds and go ahead and evict anyway because it's not enough. We don't, we don't control that.
Stacy?
That better not be happening.
I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, if I'm a landlord and 50% doesn't work for me, it just doesn't work in the numbers, I just wouldn't accept the payment. I don't, when, they don't have to.
Right, but if they do, it means that they're saying that there's no eviction for that month.
Yes, but I wasn't intimating that there would be an eviction if we paid them.
Counsel, uh, Stacy, did you have any clarification there?
Yeah, if I, if I may, just for purposes of clarity and for the, for the public, for those who are watching, part of what we're discussing here is contract law. And so, anybody who signs a lease is signing a contract, and so, within those contracts, you're gonna have remedies, uh, options or things that people can do in the event of a failure to pay rent or a landlord breaching some component of that contract. And so, the reason I state that from a public benefit point of view is if people have questions about what happens if they're not paying, or if they pay a certain percentage, um, that's something that they should look to that document, uh, to look at, because the state, in this sense, the city, is the government can't intrude on contracts between two people. So, when payments are made to assist tenants, um, it doesn't mean that the state gets to insert itself in, in that, in the terms of that contract. Does that make sense? You look, uh, confused, counselor.
Just one more question. When a landlord accepts this money, uh, what are they signing? The landlord is accepting the money from this community outreach group. What are they signing?
I'm not, I don't know, yeah, are you asking if they're signing a contract? They have gone through the process of verifying that that tenant is there and that they are accepting that payment for that month's rent. I, I'm not sure what the document looks like, or if they signed a document. There is verification done by the parties that are involved, and they're not here tonight to answer that. I can find that, I'll get back to you.
Any other discussion? Questions for Jeff?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Kylie.
Uh, Counselor Nitzer?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Nitzer.
No problem. Uh, so, Jeff, would be, would there be a possibility, Director Eckoff, I'm sorry. Would there be a way in which perhaps, if, if we were to find out that any, any landlord took adverse action against somebody, you know, maybe within the month that we gave the money, that we would just, you know, maybe we could cut them off? I mean, I, unfortunately, it would potentially punish other tenants, but we would certainly have the power to unilaterally decide we're not going to give money to a particular landlord if they're gonna be a, what I would call a bad actor, or acting in bad faith.
Uh, Counselor Nitzer, I'll, I'll take that one. One of the, when you think about the mechanism by which these payments are being made, which is through the foundation and then to the Unmet Needs Committee, the city really isn't a party to that component of it. So, uh, when it comes to pure law, as we think through this process, what I would say is that this would largely be a gift. And so, when a gift is presented on behalf of a tenant to a landlord, that a gift is complete upon delivery. And so, to my knowledge, there isn't anything that the Unmet, Unmet Needs Committee would be able to do to revoke that. But I do believe there are conversations going on whereby, uh, a tenant or a landlord would accept this, and whether, again, on an individual contractual basis, whether the, the landlord is waiving that 30% or if the tenant is making up and paying that 30% as a, you know, as a significantly reduced amount of rent for that month. Um, I suspect that that's the case, and so, the issue that's before the council tonight is that appropriation not inserting itself in the sense that, um, between the privity of contract, meaning the contracting parties, the, the landlord and the tenant, uh, it's a benefit to that tenant, uh, to the landlord via a committee, via the foundation, and a gift from the city, a contribution.
Hi, okay, thank you, and I, I would only just challenge that I'm not proposing any sort of clawback provision or anything on, on money that's already been sent out, but that we just have some sort of, even if it's just a, a known fact that we expect you to treat your, and I don't, I have no, I have no suspicion that anybody is not, but that they treat their tenants well, and on a go-forward basis, if there was any sort of an issue that we would reserve the right not to provide funding, uh, on behalf of another tenant to the same landlord. Just something to think about as you work on it administratively.
Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion? All right, we'll call in a vote on this item, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that item passes, eight to zero. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Item 61, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing interim revisions to Chapter 57 of the Code of Ordinances of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, pertaining to the novel coronavirus, COVID-19.
Mark, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is a follow-up, uh, from the first reading last week. Uh, we've worked with the industry on, uh, garbage and waste collection, and their request was, in light of COVID, if we could, uh, bring forward a temporary measure that would allow for curbside garbage pickup. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
All right, thanks, Mark. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, you got questions for Mark? Counselor Erickson?
Um, just a quick question, Mark. How are we getting the word out about this? I know you guys are usually really good about, just not a Cotter chart.
Right on.
A, a easy chart that everyone can understand in a small, a small, little area. Um, I, I'm assuming there's something like that, that will be rolled out on social media, or what, what's the goal with that?
Uh, so it's a combination of items, so there is, provided you support tonight, uh, there'll be a press release tomorrow. There'll be a social media, uh, push. We're also gonna highlight it at the 10:30 press conference. And then we did offer to industry, do they want us to try to make up, like, a larger Post-it that they could place on cans, and they said at this point in time, they've got their own ways to connect with their customers. So, we're gonna do a part of the outreach, and then the industry's gonna do the other.
Okay, that makes sense, and I, I know I get emails from my garbage haulers if they change the date, or if they do something different, or rates change, or what they're doing differently now to ensure that they're protecting everyone. Um, so I just was curious how you guys planned on marketing that, so thank you.
Should be a layered approach, yeah.
Other questions for Mark? Look for a motion on this one?
Mr. Mayor, this is...
I'm sorry, Counselor Staley, go ahead.
Mark, uh, just, just to, this is a side road, real quick. Just tell the public what, what we talked about last week about that free garbage pass.
What was the question again?
That, that, what, that, we, I was asked by some constituents about the free garbage pass, and so we're go, we're not doing it now, and you're...
Landfill?
The la, landfill.
Right, we're, we're gonna actually delay the release of that. We still hope to be able to, uh, release the free landfill, the free landfill pass later this year, and we'll still have a five-month window. Uh, but it does create a huge influx of traffic at the landfill, and to protect not only those patrons, but our landfill staff, uh, in light of COVID-19, we're going to delay, um, that, which normally gets released around April 1st, and it'll be sometime later this year based on COVID-19.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Was there a question on the phone for Mark?
Yeah, Counselor Nitzer?
Yes.
Counselor Nitzer?
Just, just to, uh, clarify, could, could, can, can you clarify, are, are you gonna be looking for the garbage cans to be on the apron, just behind the sidewalk? I know it can't be on the sidewalk, or does it? What are people gonna be guided to do specifically?
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's, it's considered curbside, um, and so it'll be as close to the curb as you can. We don't want the garbage cans counselor blocking the sidewalk. We also want to see, uh, garbage continue to be bagged so it, um, you know, does not have a litter issue. Uh, but essentially, it'll be as close to the curb as you possibly can in your given situation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor, uh, Brecky, and then Counselor Selberg.
Just, just a comment, um, for you, uh, Counselor, or, I'm sorry, Director Cotter. Um, one of the things I just want to go on the record is saying, I mean, I'm more than happy to support this during the crisis, but this is something that I think, um, I really, really feel strongly that it should not, it should return to its normal status afterwards. And I just want to make you aware of that as the director. I know for years, um, the city of Sioux Falls has been blessed with the kind of garbage service that we have, and that the strong competitive nature of it has given us extra perks that they don't have in other parts of the country, and one of those perks is the individualized, um, service that receive, that where, where they actually go, you know, beyond the curbside, where they don't do it this way, that's just what I'm trying to say, where we have that individual service, and that's something that is really valued and we should feel really lucky about. Again, I'm happy to do it during this time, and I know you said earlier when you presented it that that was, it was not the intent to change that afterwards, and I just wanted to state that I'm really supportive of it, of it with that condition, that it returned to its natural procedures afterwards.
Very good, thank you.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, if I, like I do nowadays, leave my garbage up by the garage, and I do that, and it doesn't get picked up, that's my fault as a citizen from here on with this.
Actually, um, the way the ordinance is wrote, counselor, is that if your garbage hauler, uh, requests that you bring it to the curb, that you're allowed to do so, 'cause the way the current ordinance, um, is wrote, it's a, it basically is text that says "other than curbside," so it'll be a relationship between you and your hauler. This, um, temporary measure just allows for, um, curbside pickup.
Okay, so the hauler will be informing me and everybody else that this is coming, so they won't get a thousand phone calls of people screaming when...
That's right, and then return it, um, back up to its inconspicuous place after your day of pickup.
Terrific, thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Look for a motion on this item?
Move approval?
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion approved by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. Any final discussion, counsel? All right, let's vote on this item, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 62.
Item 62, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the northwest corner of East 61st Street and South Sycamore Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the O Office District, number 11682-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, four to zero.
Hey, Jason?
Uh, good evening, uh, Council Mayor, uh, Jason Bieber with Planning and Development Services. Uh, this is an application by Joel Dykstra with R&amp;B Associates. It's located at the northwest corner of East 61st Street and South Sycamore Avenue. It's about 1.34 acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing two new office buildings on the parcel.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this one? Look for a motion?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Move to approve. Second, Kylie.
All right, move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, counsel? We'll take a vote on this, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr? Staley? Staley? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item 63, please.
Item 60, item 63, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of East 26th Street and South Cleveland Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban Districts to the O Office District, number 11683-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, four to zero.
Uh, the applicant here is Vic Patel. The owner is Greg Shippen. It's located at the southwest corner of East 26th Street and South Cleveland Avenue. It's about 0.84 acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this is to rezone the existing office building and parking lot, and then the applicant is looking at constructing a new office building on the west lot.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this one?
Move to set the second reading?
Uh, actually, I think, no second reading.
Oh, whoops, what did I miss?
Need a motion to approve.
I'm sleeping, sorry. Move to approve.
Got it. Second on that?
Second, Sale.
Seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion on the council? All right, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item 64.
Item 64, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 2601 South Norton Avenue from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, number 11697-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero.
Uh, the applicant and owner here is Keith Kocher. It's located at 2601 South Norton Avenue, just southeast of Augustana University. It's about 0.31 acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a triplex on the lot. Uh, each of these units, of the three units, will require two parking spaces for a total of six spaces for this, uh, triplex.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item here? Counselors, questions for Jason on this?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion to approve by Selberg, seconded by Sale. Discussion, counsel? We'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Item 66.
Item 65?
Uh, six, let's do 65, too, sure.
Second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of East 69th Street and South Southeastern Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District, number 11700-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, four to zero.
Uh, the applicant and owner here is Brady Hyde. It's located at the southwest corner of the Roundabout at 69th and Southeastern Avenue. Uh, it's just under 10 acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing some future apartments with ru- roughly 100 units on the 10 acres.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this?
Move approval?
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion approved by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. Discussion, counsel? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Now we'll move to 66.
Item 66, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southeast corner of West 22nd Street and South Ellis Road from the LW Live Work District to the C2 Neighborhood Commercial RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts, number 11681-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, four to zero.
Uh, the applicant and owner here is Chuck Point with Ronnie Companies. It's located at the southeast corner of 22nd and South Ellis Road. It's about 8.36 acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing roughly 25 new single-family homes, and then three townhomes that would be adjacent to South Ellis Road, and then a small 27-foot-wide strip, uh, would be zoned commercial and combined with the existing commercial property to the south to give it a little bit more depth and make it a little bit more easier to develop.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this item? Okay, look for a motion, please.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Starr.
All right, motion approved by Erickson, that's seconded by Counselor Starr. Any discussion, counsel? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 67, 67, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Item sixty-seven, second reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the northwest corner of East Arrowhead Parkway and South Six Mile Road from the C4 Commercial Regional RD-two Town Home Residential Suburban and O Office Districts to the RE-three Apartment Residential High Density, RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD-two Town Home Residential Suburban, O Office CN Conservation District number one-one-six-eight-eight-dash-twenty-twenty and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero.
The applicant and owner here is Clint Ackerman with Signature Companies. It's located east of South Veterans Parkway and north of East Arrowhead Parkway. It's roughly 175 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a single-family townhome apartment office and commercial subdivision on the 175 acres.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Discussion, Counsel? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item sixty-eight, second reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of East Fifty-seventh Street and Highway eleven from the AG Agriculture and RD-two Residential Suburban Town Home Districts to the LW Live Work District number one-one-six-nine-nine-dash-twenty-twenty and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero.
The applicant and owner here is Brady Hyde. It's located south of East Fifty-seventh Street and then just west of future Highway one hundred. It's about 60 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a future office and multifamily residential development.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, questions for Jason?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Selberg. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Discussion, Counsel? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Item sixty-nine, please.
Item sixty-nine, second reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 700 South Sneve Avenue from the O Office District to the RT-one Single Family Residential Traditional District number one-one-six-three-nine-dash-twenty-twenty and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero.
The applicant here is Lynn Keller Forbes with CCOG. The owner is the Boys and Girls Club. It's located at Thirteenth and South Sneve Avenue. It's about four and a half acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a single-family residential development worth roughly 24 lots. It's going to be a combination of a couple houses that they moved in from the Rose Lotta area, and then they will fix them up and kind of rehab them, and then also some future governor's houses will be placed on these lots.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on it?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Starr.
All right, motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Starr. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr?
Yes, I think the public may have missed this as part of this, but this is us. This is CCOG doing this. This is the Southeastern Council of Government. It's a project that we're able to recycle some houses and move them, and I want to make sure that the mayor and the housing authority gets credit for at least the department and planning to do this. So I don't want this one to just slip through. This is a major win for housing in our city, so thank you.
Bet, big project indeed. Any other discussion on this? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to first readings, item seventy.
Item seventy, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, repealing subchapter Disability Awareness Commission and subchapter ADA Accessibility Review Board and adding a new subchapter Disability Awareness and Accessibility Review Board to Chapter ninety-eight Human Relations of the Code of Ordinances of Said City. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, April fifteenth, 2020.
Stacy, I'm going to give you the floor on this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is basically the Disability Awareness Commission and the ADA Accessibility Review Board being combined into one board. There have been some challenges with recruiting board members, and a lot of the subject matter that they each address are very similar. And so in effect, what's happening here is that the body of ordinances related to each board are being merged into one. So the same scope of duties and subject areas remain. It would just be a matter of combining them in order to ensure that we are able to recruit and maintain a quorum of individuals to address those important issues.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for our legal team on this one?
Move approval?
Second, Erickson.
Okay, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion, Counsel? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Item seventy-one.
First reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, repealing subchapter Affordable Housing Advisory Board of Chapter thirty-two City Organizations of the Code of Ordinances of Said City. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, April fifteenth, 2020.
Jeff?
Good evening, Jeff Eckhoff, Planning and Development Services again. This is really one of the big resolves for the big wins of the mayors, once Sioux Falls, the housing leg of once Sioux Falls. This is a step towards creating the housing clinic that we've heard so much about. This dissolves the current Affordable Housing Advisory Board within the city, which had become fairly inactive, and, and joints, and, 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 item seventy-four, we'll talk about joint powers agreement that combines this board with the affordable, or the homeless advisory board at the county to create a new board. We'll go through that when that agreement comes up on the agenda, but this is just to dissolve the current Affordable Housing Advisory Board with the city.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jeff? Okay, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, April fifteenth. That's moved by Selberg. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Sale. Any discussion, Counsel? We will vote on that, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.